Here.
White.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Baxter.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Ken.
Here.
And Height.
Present.
McCormick is present.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ross is going to lead us in prayer. Ms. Ross?
Please bow our hands. Heavenly Father, please be with our city, state, and country during this pandemic. Watch over and protect our citizens, businesses, and all of our city employees. Please help us all to be kinder and more understanding to each other. Thank you for always watching over us. Amen.
Amen. How about a motion on the minutes?
Some of it.
Second.
Got a motion, second, on the minutes.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor? Taylor? Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, we've got Robinson. Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Taylor, I never did hear you say yes.
I never did hear you call me, "Yes."
You froze up. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. We've got three communications. One is, our finance director is going to give us an executive summary, so does anybody want to pull one or three? Seeing none, how about a motion to accept one and three?
Second.
On the motion to accept one and three, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We've got two presentations tonight. I'm going to start out with Captain Leonard Montgomery, our Mercy Services Director, as requested, where he's going to give us an executive summary on our FEMA reimbursement update. Leonard?
Okay. After the 2019 flood, we developed 15 total projects for the damages to the city's infrastructure. Of those 15 projects, 14 have currently been obligated. The final project has been submitted to FEMA for review. The final project pays the project management expenses, and this is where we're going to get reimbursed for the consultants the city hired to help us with the actual submitting of the documents to FEMA. We submitted a little over $9.4 million worth of damages to FEMA. Of that, the city's share is a little over $7,890,000. So far, we've collected $438,951. There's another $1,040,000 I'll submit to the state for their review and reimbursement. That's still ongoing. I've got one project, the final project to submit, worth about $473,000. The hydro project, terminated debris at the hydro plant, is by far the largest of our projects. It was estimated to be at $6,780,000, of which our share is going to be $5,85,000. Right now, that project is due for completion in February 2021.
Now, that project has been approved, is it not?
All the projects have been approved, yes, sir. With the exception of the management expenses, they've all been approved, and that will just a matter of time.
Let me tell you guys, I've been doing this a long time, and Leonard has done a remarkable job. We've got 14 out of 14, so to speak, that have been approved. All the department heads, tremendous job in putting all their paperwork together. Charlie Baxter was Leonard's right-hand man and helped him keep us between the ditches. And when you're talking about $9 million, I'm talking about unbelievable job, Leonard, and I do appreciate you very, very much for leading that charge. Mr. Height, question?
Yeah, I just had a question of Leonard, that FEMA money that you were referring to out in the area of the Big Dam Bridge, does that include repairing the trail, the river trail?
Yes, sir, it did. That's one of the projects.
Pardon me?
Yes, sir, that was one of the projects. It was to repair the entire trail structure that was damaged.
Okay.
Any other questions, Leonard? Go ahead, Charlie.
I'm just going to say, when can we expect to see some fixes via our FEMA money? When can we expect to see some repairs started?
It's starting now. Most of the projects, either the large projects are complete. The small projects are undergoing. We've got a few projects still to finish up, but work is going on now.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
All right, Leonard, thank you very much for your report. Next, Ember Strange, if you'll come up, please, and give us an executive summary of our finances.
Good evening. I believe all of you received the August 2020 financial report. And I'll just give a brief overview of this report. I won't go over every fund, but you can always contact me with any questions. Just keep in mind that this is recorded on a cash basis, which means it's recorded as we receive it. So many of your revenues, like sales tax, property tax, franchise fees, hotel, motel lodging, and food tax are going to be behind two months because we, at year-end, we true those up to the modified accrual basis of accounting. So they may look like they're behind budget because they're two months in arrears. If you look at page one, the general fund, sales tax as a whole is in line with budget. We're really glad about that. When the pandemic hit, that was a big concern. Property tax is in line with budget. Couple of our revenues that are a little below budget are charges for services, license and permits and fines and fees. Those things are to be expected with the closures that we had. In order to offset those declines in some of those revenues, we curtailed our expenses early on. The departments did a really, really good job on that. When I review each of the departments, there's only three departments that are over their month-to-date budget, which that would be 67% when we're looking at August. And when I looked in detail at those, it was really just the timing of the expenditures, so there was no concern there. So altogether, the general fund is looking really good right now. If you go to page two, that's the street fund. If you look there, the revenues are approximately $42,000 below where they were last year. This is partially because of the property tax accrual, but it's also partially offset by a lower revenue from the turnback. When the state modified their budget, we started seeing a couple of months where our street turnback funds were lower. They're now back on pace, and I expect that that's going to be in line with budget. Street expenditures are right where they need to be at 67%. If you turn to page three, to the parks fund, their revenue is $358,000 below the prior year. Parks' major revenue source is the hotel, motel, lodging, and revenue tax. COVID, when COVID hit, it has really, really hit the hotel industry. The food industry has recovered. They've gotten creative. We've seen the Argenta Outdoor Dining District. We've seen that recover some. But to offset this decline, the Parks Department has done a really good job in curtailling their expenditures. They're only at 55% of their budget in the Parks Fund, and 45% in their capital improvement fund. So they've really done a good job of only spending what's necessary because we knew there wasn't what we were facing in the revenues. If you go on to page six, that's the IT Fund, and they're right where they need to be at 67% of expenditures. Page 10, this is a new fund. We haven't had it in the past. It's our grant fund. Here, I'm taking any federal money that we get and reclassifying it to this fund. Everything isn't here yet because it is an undertaking to get it out of the department's budgets and into this fund, but for instance, the FEMA money. So what Leonard was talking about, to date, we've received $438,000. All of that is not recorded in this fund yet. If you look at the line that says administration, that's actually a COVID grant that we received, $102,000. We classified it there because it was easier, but we received $132,000 from the Department of Justice. We've already expended and received that money. So that was taken out of the department's budgets to help offset that cost and reclassified here. If you go to page 15, this is the Bering Cross TIF Capital Project Fund. This was a private placement project we did last year. I just wanted to let you all know, we've spent all of our funds on that. It was for Rockwater Village III. That's complete. If you go to page 16, that's our 2019 Capital Improvement Fund for the Justice Center. And as of August, we have spent about $3.6 million. We have different debt service requirements that we have to stay in compliance with, and I'm happy to say we are in line with all of those requirements. That's a high-level, quick overview. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or you can email me at any time.
Questions for Ember? Seeing none, how about a motion to accept our communication?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Consent agenda. Anybody want to pull one out of their consent agenda? I'm seeing four.
Is Mr. Owens in the House tonight?
He is in the House tonight.
Well, I guess we ought to pull his nomination, or do we need to have a confirmation hearing on him? Or are we just going to railroad this?
Let's railroad him in. Let's just approve all of them, and I'll certainly recognize him. How's that? How about a motion?
Okay, just do that.
How about a motion? Mr. Height, thank you. Mr. Taylor gave us a second. On the motion to accept the consent agenda?
That's usually an all-in favor.
All-in favor. Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Appalled, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. John was handpicked by me. I needed somebody that had some leadership capabilities and that understood our airport, was an economic development asset, and he fit the bill perfectly, and he's agreed to serve. So thank you for that. Also, back in the communication, thank you for your yearly report, or quarterly report. We met, John and I, and our economic development, Todd and Robert, with media today to talk about economic development and all the projects that we're working on right now. And I can assure you that the media was amazed at how many projects that we've got that we're working on right now. So it's been a great partnership with our economic development team and with John and his team at the Chamber. So, John, thank you for agreeing to serve on the Airport Commission. We've got a lot of neat things going on out there. Okay, new business.
R 2142, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a First Amendment to real estate development and option to purchase with Jay Chandler &amp; Company for property located on Main and Sixth Streets.
Move for adoption. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes. I have a question.
All right.
It concerns, I know that extends his option to purchase for another 12 months, but in the meantime, are they going to do anything with that pile of gravel that's down there? They're going to tidy that up or anything, just?
Absolutely. I think it's in the legislation. We're going to clear that. We're going to sod it and irrigate it. And Mr. Chandler is going to, if he buys that property in the next 12 months, he's going to reimburse us $30,000 towards that landscaping.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Next.
R 2143, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 2910 East Broadway in the city of North Little Rock constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
How about a motion?
Don't move. Second.
Got a motion and a second. I'm going to call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on 2910 East Broadway or online? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R 2144, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with Plaskett County Tax Collector against property located at 720 Water Street in the city of North Little Rock.
Don't move.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on 720 Water Street or online? Seeing none in either place, close the public hearing. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R 2145, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of lanes to be filed with Plaskett County Tax Collector against properties in the city of North Little Rock as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Move for adoption.
Got a motion and a second by Height and Taylor. To call a public hearing, is anyone here or online to speak on any of these cutting expenses and abatements of other nuisances? Seeing none in either location, close the public hearing. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Ordinances, O 2085, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance levying a tax on all real and personal property within the city of North Little Rock for the Police Pension and Relief Fund, the Fire Pension and Relief Fund, the Municipal Library Fund, and the North Little Rock General Fund. First reading.
Move to suspend all readings. Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Hold it. Ms. Ross, this is not a new tax. This is just a legislation we have to do every year. Okay?
That was my question, just to explain it. Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Got a motion to adopt.
Don't move. Second.
On the motion?
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes. Mayor?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Ross, I've been on the City Council. I think this is my 20th year, and I think this is the 20th time that we have adopted this legislation, if I'm correct, so.
You're correct. We do it every year. Ms. Ross?
I understand. I understand, but I think that everybody needs an explanation because some people don't understand that this is something we do every year.
I didn't hear you, Debbie.
Am I cutting out?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Kind of.
Okay. No, I was just saying, I just, just to explain to everyone kind of what it is.
Yeah, glad to do that. Thank you.
O 2086, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements and authorizing the purchase of Payment Works subscription, a sole-source vendor. First reading. And someone has their microphone unmuted. We're getting some feedback from you guys at home, so be sure you stay muted when you're not talking.
How about a motion?
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Suspend all readings. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt?
Don't move.
All right, got Mrs. White and Mr. Taylor on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris? Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O 2087, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending Section 2.1.5 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, Chapter 12, Public Safety Regulations. First reading.
Mr. Don, now we're going to suspend all readings.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Height and Baxter, suspend all readings. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
How about a motion?
Don't move. Second.
Got a motion and a second. On the motion?
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O 2088, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance authorizing certain real property owned by Blue Rock Sportsman's Club Incorporated to be used as a shooting range, exempting said property from the provisions of Section 2.1.5 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, Chapter 12, Public Safety. First reading.
Move to suspend all readings. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Suspend all readings. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes. Motion to adopt. Second.
Got a motion and a second. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height? Height? Try again, Height?
Oh. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O 2089, Councilmember Robinson?
Please call it.
An ordinance amending Section 2.1.2 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, Chapter 9, Parking Regulations. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Got a motion and a second to suspend all readings by Robinson and Taylor. On the motions to suspend?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. On the motion?
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Move to suspend the readings. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Suspend all readings. On the motion, we'll come back to you, Mr. Taylor.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Taylor, you're up.
Uh, my question is, conditional use, meaning that this runs with the land, so if this thing is ever sold, then the new owners will automatically have a conditional use. Do we really want to do conditional use, or do we want to do special use?
Ms. Ross, you want to answer that?
Uh, Mr. Osbrook is on the, he's on the line right there. You can ask him that question if you'd like to. It would be up to him.
All right, um, okay, Chad Osbrook, I believe he's on the line. Can he hear us?
I'm sorry, I can just now hear you.
Okay, the question is that, that Mr. Taylor would like for it to be a special use instead of a conditional use, which goes with you as a, as a, as a business owner, but if you went to sell it, you would lose it being a car lot. What's your opinion of that?
With me not, with me, with, with me not owning the property, would that matter? I leased the property.
If the property is leased, it'd probably be even more reason for it to be a special use.
Okay.
Yeah, do you agree with that, Ms. Ross? Okay, so, Ms. Ross, what we're gonna do is we're gonna change this to a special use so it covers you and your car dealership, and in the event that it ceases being a car dealership run by you, then it goes back to the zoning that it is right now. Correct, council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, how about a motion to adopt, Mr. Taylor?
How about a motion to amend first?
How about a motion to amend first?
Well, okay, you don't have a motion pending right now because you don't have a motion to adopt. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we did.
All right, what do you want me to do?
You need a motion to adopt and a second first, then the motion to amend, then a new motion to adopt.
Okay, how about a motion to, to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Motion and a second. On the motion to adopt, and then we'll, I think we're doing it the wrong way.
Oh, now you ask for a motion to amend.
Okay, all right, now, Mr. Taylor has a motion to amend, and Ms. Ross seconded it, that we're gonna change this from a conditional use to a special use.
Yes.
On the amendment.
Okay, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
And now a motion to adopt as amended.
Okay.
I said adopted.
And Mr. Baxter seconded that. On the motion.
On the motion to adopt as amended, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
And now a motion to adopt as amended.
Okay.
I said adopted.
And Mr. Baxter seconded that. On the motion.
On the motion to adopt as amended, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
And now a motion to adopt as amended.
Okay.
I said adopted.
And Mr. Baxter seconded that. On the motion.
On the motion to adopt as amended, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
And before I call the emergency, it's my understanding there's been an existing business operating at this location. Is that correct? Does anyone know if that's correct? Um, so we're going to have-
I don't know, I don't-
We're going to have to get that-
But there was-
Oh, go ahead.
There was, there was a, a car lot there for, I mean, years, so I don't know if it's still, if it's still operating or not, but there, there has been a business there.
I believe Big Rock Hostel has been operating another type business there, and so we're gonna need to take care of some licensing issue on that.
Okay, Mr. Osbrook, I hope you're listening. You need to come in and see the city clerk's office to get these license straight and corrected, if you don't mind. Thank you very much.
So on the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O 2091, Councilmember Height?
Please call it.
An ordinance rezoning property located at North Brick Drive in the City of North Little Rock from C3 to R1, zoning classification amending ordinance 9263, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property, first reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Give me a second.
Second.
Mr. Taylor.
Uh, what's the, uh, what's the planned use for, for this, uh, rezoning?
Mr. Height?
A residential subdivision?
New subdivision.
Yeah. It's adjacent, it's adjacent to an existing subdivision. It's an extension of that subdivision.
Looking good.
Pound Al's on the phone.